Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Chad Nelson. Matthew Mitchell. Gabrielle Medley. David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dane Hatch. Paul Air.
Here.
And Tiffany Wilson.
Okay, we have a couple of vacancies. We have at least one alternate. Ms. Wilson, would you please take the vacant seat, please, or one of the vacant seats? The next item on the agenda is Correspondence and Announcements. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. You should have in front of you a little packet that has information, an envelope with comments about the foothills development. Some neighborhood, some people up in that neighborhood are concerned about development, future development on that property. There are no items planned for this, for your hearing at this point on these, on the foothills development, so it's just your information. They want to make sure the information got to the Planning Commission.
Is there anything planned for the future for that? Do we have anything on the future agendas?
There may be. We're waiting on applications to come in, so.
Okay, so no applications.
We haven't received any applications yet.
Okay.
Also, at the last council meeting, they approved the storage unit plan development, rezoned. They're on Industrial Boulevard, that small commercial storage unit project. And the final staff announcement is Chad Nelson has offered his resignation effective immediately. We received that on Friday. He's got some, spent some more time with his family, and he's got some professional conflicts that he needs to give more priority to there, apparently. And so with that, we're down to Planning Commission member. The city council at their next meeting, they'll make, have an announcement that there's vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they'll have a deadline for people to submit if they want to become, join, apply to a joint or become a member of the Planning Commission and/or an alternate. And they'll go through that selection process and, of course, make selections at a future council meeting date. My understanding is if you've already applied in the last six months or so, your application will still be on file. If you do have questions about that, feel free to reach out to the city clerk's office.
So, based on what you just said, and as I understand it, the alternates would have to apply for the permanent position formally?
I think that'd be the safest bet for them to contact the city clerk's office about that. That'd probably be the way to go.
So if you want to be a permanent member, go ahead and submit your application to the city clerk.
Contact the city clerk's office and see if, what needs to be done for that.
Okay. Anything else?
That concludes staff's announcements.
Okay, so then the next item on the agenda, since our vice chair has resigned, we need to elect a new vice chair. So at this point, I will entertain, what do I do? Entertain a motion for a vice chair? A nomination? And I can't make that. So do we have a nomination for a vice chair amongst these one, two, three, four?
Well, I make a motion for David. He's been on the commission for a long time. He understands the process and, and has been serving for a while, so I'll make a motion that he be vice chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. A motion made by Mrs. Earl and second by Ms. Wilson to nominate Mr. Diaz as the vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any further discussion?
What do you think? You don't have to.
I gladly accept it. If you voted, I'm on it.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting. Were there any corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Diaz, second by Ms. Wilson, that we pass the minutes, approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none again, let's place our votes.
Motion passes six to zero.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, and so I will state that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. City staff will present each item, and there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone in the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments less than three minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 22-3476. This is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Encanto II townhouses at 450 Lake Havasu Avenue North. This is track 2252, block 3, lot 5, creating an 11-unit residential townhouse subdivision in the residential multifamily RM district. And Mr. Kearns, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is located on Lake Havasu Avenue North, in between Bahama Avenue and Sabino Drive. The properties to the north and south are zoned residential multifamily and developed for those uses. The properties to the west are zoned multifamily, general commercial and light commercial, and they're developed for those uses. The site is currently vacant, but building permits have been submitted and design review is underway. The proposed townhouse plat will allow the units to be individually owned, and they will be part of an association along with the common portions of the development. The project includes 11 residential units with 11 covered parking spaces and three uncovered parking spaces. Parcel A is an easement for ingress and egress, maintenance and operation of utilities, sewage, drainage, refuse collection, and emergency vehicles. Parcel B is a common pool and recreation area. The project will have a property owner's association to manage and maintain the association improvements. Parcels A and B will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision will be installed and maintained by the association. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is also available.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff by commissioners? Do I see you reaching Mr. Lair or no? Okay. All right, is the applicant present? Would you like to state your name for the record and make your presentation?
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Johnson, APL survey, and staff did a wonderful job explaining the project, and this is the next phase of the one that is just to the north of this, Encanto I is to the north, and this is Encanto II, and the two projects will be sharing the common area of the pool between the two units. So other than that, if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Questions of the applicant by commissioners? Anybody? Mrs. Earl, please.
I just have one. I was looking at, it looks like they're about 660 square feet.
Yeah, they're just a little over 600 square feet.
Yeah, and I know there's, in the lot next door, they're also building these, what I call tiny houses.
Yes, same.
Same concept.
Same.
Is there a reason you didn't want to put them together to make a 1,200? You know, fewer of them, but 1,200 square feet versus a 600?
You would have to ask the builder that one. Far as I know, that they've been doing these quite a bit, and they've been selling, so they've just continued their typical model that they've been building throughout town.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, anybody at all, please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Bob Smith. New at this, so I don't know how it works, but.
Mr. Smith, please put the microphone closer to your mouth.
Okay. What's to prevent one person or one corporation from buying all these many units and then selling them at a higher price?
Your guess is as good as ours.
These are supposed to be starter homes. They're supposed to be made for individual ownership. When a corporation or individual person buys them all and then resells them at a price, you're just screwing the people that want a starter home. They're raising a price 30, 40, $50,000 or what they paid for because they know the market to bear it. How come some men written in these ordinances where you can't do that?
It's private property, sir.
They gotta evidently get some kind of okay to build it, so the city's got some kind of say into it. Why don't they stick that in there and say, hey, this is one of the stipulations. You want to build them? This is a stipulation you gotta go by. It's happened all over the city where people build these individual home, small homes, starter homes for small families under, that can't afford the exorbitant rents they charge everywhere, and they go in and one person buys them all and then jacks the price up so nobody can afford them again. That should be something the city should put in there and says, you can't do that.
I'll defer to Ms. Gary, but I would suggest that that's probably not a function of government to mandate those kind of.
It is when you have to issue the permit to build it.
Ms. Gary?
Good morning. And this is, of course, where we're talking about approval of a preliminary subdivision plat, and so we're only looking at the requirements and portions of what would be approval for a subdivision plat. We don't have any authority to put any of those types of conditions within, within a preliminary plat, preliminary plat approval, or any other approval currently with the city.
Does that answer your question?
No, not really. Not really. The city has control because they're issuing a permit to build these units. Evidently, it's some kind of special use permit to do it. When you get a special use permit, the city can put stipulations on it that this is what's gotta be done. You're building these many homes everywhere.
Mr. Chairman.
And selling them for exorbitant prices because nobody can afford them anyway.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Morris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let the speaker know that the city has certain development standards and through the subdivision process and the zoning process. So the underlying zoning has particular standards that need to be met, and those are being met through the subdivision, for this, by the subdivision, the way it's designed, as well as the subdivision code has standards that need to be met, and that's what we're held to, those standards that are in the established subdivision and zoning codes. This particular subdivision meets all those standards. There's no reason in any of our city codes for denial of this request. I understand the speaker's concerns, but there's nothing in our development code that says this is something that could be denied. There's, there's nothing in there, no grounds for denial if it meets all the development code and the subdivision code standards. So that would be my answer for the gentleman.
So basically what we're saying is they are working within the confines of the code and the requirements of the subdivision, and it meets all of the approval process.
Then why don't you change the codes?
Well, that might be something that you might want to explore with the city.
Well, this is a planning commission, zoning and planning commission. Why don't they change the codes?
I can't answer you, sir.
Can I say something?
That's kind of what I figured. Thanks.
Mr. Diaz?
So that's part of the general plan, I believe, that has to be approved by the voters, correct? Any code, any like major code changes and so?
The subdivision code falls under the purview and review of the city council.
Right.
So any sort of changes or requirements or changes or modifications to the subdivision code would have to go through a approval process of the city council.
And it's a similar, kind of a similar argument we had, and you might remember this, that where we approved some homes out there on Victoria Road, Victoria Farms, and the question was, can we put stipulations in there that they cannot be sold to weekend people? And you can't do that. It's against FHA fair housing, fair housing rules. So I understand your concerns, but it's, it's not in our purview right here at this time.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Pro or con? All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's presentations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of Land Use Action 223476, a preliminary subdivision plat for Encanto II townhouses at 450 Lake Havasu Avenue North, track 2252, block 3, lot 5, creating an 11-unit residential townhouse in the residential multifamily district.
Okay, we are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Ballard, do you want to make a motion?
I do, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ID 22-3476, a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Encanto II townhouses at 450 Lake Havasu Avenue North, track 2252, block 3, lot 5, creating an 11-unit residential townhouse subdivision in the residential multifamily RM district.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ballard and a second by Ms. Earl to approve ID number 22-3476 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Anybody? Okay, let's call for the question. Okay, congratulations and good luck. The next item on today's agenda is ID 22-3469. It's a request for amendments to Title 14 Zoning Development Code, Section 14.04.08, sign standards, and Section 14.06.03, definitions, adding development standards for changeable copy and electronic reader board signs, establishing minimum freestanding sign base width, amending political sign standards, and amending sign definitions. Mr. Morris, I believe this is, this is yours?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. A little background, staff recently received comments expressing concerns about the width of freestanding sign bases and the size of electronic reader board signs and regulations for political signs. The following is an overview of the proposed amendments that will help address these concerns. The freestanding sign base, a note has been added to our table, sign table, that establishes that a freestanding sign base must be at least 50% as wide as the full sign width. This has really been a presumed standard for years and now is included in the code. If this wasn't in place, then theoretically poll signs could be allowed, which are actually are prohibited. So we're using this standard to cover, making sure things aren't poll signs and having a minimum at least 50% of the sign width as the base of the sign. Changeable copy and electronic reader board signs, our code hasn't really directly related regulations for the size of these, so we have added notes to the sign table for changeable copy and electronic reader boards that establish a minimum, a maximum size of 32 square feet and then a minimum of eight seconds between displayed images. They'd go from one static image to another static image, and they'd have to go, wait at least eight seconds to change between each of those images. A review of other Arizona jurisdictions found that 32 square feet was a common maximum size for signs when they were required, and then eight seconds was a common minimum display time for those types of changeable signs. We also modified and amended a little bit of the definitions and some miscellaneous changes. Animated or moving signs, changeable copy sign and electronic reader board sign definitions have been updated and revised. And then what goes along with this also is the political signs. We reorganized a layout of that section 140408J and renamed it to political signs. We removed references that required a payment of a fee. There's never been a fee for these types of signs, so that felt like something should be removed. We also added requirements that the person or organization planning to erect the sign must provide the city clerk with a name, address, or telephone number of a person responsible for the placement and removal of the sign. That's typically the candidate or the, or the organization's action committee. We also replaced the freestanding sign area map with a legible version. That concludes staff's presentation. We do, of course, have all the changes. We'd be happy to go over with you in a document that we could look at if you want to review those changes in more detail. Thank you.
Okay, questions of Mr. Morris? Mr. Diaz?
I have one. Oh, sorry, Mr. Diaz.
So, Mr. Morris, so during the last political run, there was a lot of signs that are up and down, McCullough, all over the place, and, and some of them were local candidates, which I thought was interesting, but others were, you know, general candidates who were running for state offices and Mahawee County offices. How do we enforce that with the, more so with the out-of-the-area, you know, offenders?
Well, thank you for that question. The way it is perceived to be happening, it would be, they would need to basically register with the city clerk's office with their contact information and whatever their, if it's a candidate or they have a ballot measure or something, and so we would have that contact information. Also, per the state code, on their sign itself, it's supposed to have contact information for them. So if they put something up and we don't have them registered with the city, then we could reach out to them through that required contact information that's supposed to be on their sign regardless, and have them then be in touch with our city clerk, so we'll have that process. So we'll have them on record with us.
Thank you. Any other question? Mrs. Earl?
Yes, a couple things. One, on the section, it says a person or organization. Do we want to change that to candidate? Because person could be, could be me putting one in my yard. I mean, I'm concerned about private citizens thinking they've got to go to the city and get a permit to put something in their yard.
Good point.
So I'm wondering if we should designate, this doesn't, one, it doesn't apply to your own personal private property, and secondly, maybe change it from person to candidate. So a candidate or a candidate's campaign is still considered part of the candidate. They would have to go to the city to take the registration and things like that.
Mr. Morris, what do you say?
Well, that's a good question. These regulations for political signs are for signs in the city's right-of-way. So anything that's on private property is private property matter.
Doesn't apply.
This doesn't apply. So if it's in the city's right-of-way, then we want to be aware and be able to reach out and contact that person if it's in an area it shouldn't be. So that's the reason for it. Person could be, I don't, I don't know the legal interpretation of a person, but I would, typically what we see would be the organization for the candidate or the ballot measure. We're not, the intent here is not to have someone, a general citizen, get one of these permits to put something up in their yard. If that's not what we're looking for, then that's not required.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Ballard?
Is it then the case that these political signs, whether they're local or not local, cannot be placed on private property without the private property owner's permission?
Yeah, per the state code, they should not be placing their signs on private property without the private property owner's permission, correct?
Any other questions? Could I ask that potentially we, or maybe we go over each one of these, these items and go over the actual verbiage?
Certainly.
Real quick, like, just so that it's on the record, rather than just saying, here's the changes.
Gotcha. So here are the track changes that were included with your packet. So here's, under freestanding signs, other conditions, we're saying that the freestanding sign base must be at least 50% as wide as the full sign width. Changeable copy and electronic reader board signs shall not exceed 32 square feet or the allowed sign area, whichever is less. So if you're allowed only 30 square feet of signage, you're allowed then 30 square feet of changeable message sign. If you're allowed 64 square feet of signage, you're only allowed 32 square feet of changeable message signage. And you can combine, you can have 32 square of changeable, and then the other 32 of that 64 could be a static, normal, typical sign.
Might I ask where that number came from?
That 32 came from a polling other jurisdictions within Arizona, and that was a common size. And four by eight is 32 square feet. It's, it's a pretty standard size.
Can I ask that question?
Ms. Ballard?
Does that then preclude all real estate signs being erected cannot be on a single pole? They must be on a double pole?
Real estate signs are a little different. They have a different section, so they typically don't require permits, so it's a whole different section.
And again, this is in the city right-of-way.
This is separate from the political signs.
Okay.
These signs here that we're talking about right now, as we're reviewing the sign code, these are non-residential. These are commercial signs on commercial property typically. So these are on private property signage regulations here. So, and then when we get later in here, we'll go over the more in review of the political signs. So this is just the onsite commercial signs.
A follow-up question then. My question, you said, would be covered under real estate signs. Those real estate signs would cover residential and commercial?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that was the size of 32 square feet.
Mr. Lair, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Jim. Have you received many complaints over the years related to electronic signage?
We have, we haven't because there haven't been that many, and there have been a few in the last few years, and there's a really large one, I think, was a, was a subject of, what brought this to a head at this point, yeah.
You say there is a large one that we had, you had some complaints about?
Yeah, it's about 200 square feet, about 10 by 20, which is the maximum that's allowed per, maximum signage that's allowed on a property.
Was it a competitor that was blaming?
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue.
And then changeable copy and electronic reader board displays shall remain static for at least eight seconds. So the idea there is goes from one static image to another. We're not looking for graphics, we're not looking for video, that sort of thing. It's one static image to another static image. So these signs aren't designed to be video boards. They're allowed to be just static image boards that happen to change at least every eight seconds. No, not at least, but stay static for at least eight seconds. And basically the same thing applies for wall or other signs, like wall signs on the property, not exceed 32 square feet and then have to be, remain static for at least eight seconds. So this would be if you have something on the wall of your building that has an electronic reader board built into it, it would apply there too. And then we get into the definitions that we changed up a little bit. Actually, under prohibited signs, we just say animated or moving signs are prohibited. And then we modify the definition of animated or moving sign to include lines, signs that are flashing, scintillating, blinking, traveling lights, or any other means not providing constant illumination. We added that to the definition.
May I go back to number two?
Okay.
Why are they prohibited?
Animated signs, because we're looking, the signs that go from one static image to another. We're not looking for full video or anything like that on the signage. If it's something that the city, the Planning Commission or the city council wants to amend and maybe allow it, something you can certainly put your two cents in and send on to the city council, but this time, we've never really allowed video type moving signs. I'm not saying they're not out there, but they are not supposed to be allowed per the code, and this is making it also clear that that's not allowed.
With today's technology, advancing technology, I would think that there's probably more of a call for those.
Yeah, and that could be something I envision, looking at the entire sign code in two years or two or three years or so maybe, and looking at the sign code and maybe revamping it and revising, updating the entire code. At this point, we're looking at kind of Band-Aids at this, at this level.
Ms. Earl?
This came up in the other desert city that I was on the planning commission. And part of the problem when they don't stay static for a while is the, it distracts the drivers, because these are always put where drivers are going to see, the public's going to see them because you want to draw them into your business. If you don't have the static of some kind, then what happens is people are doing this because it's doing the flashing or the changing or the moving or, and that was the big thing that we had as a, as a thing, as people were saying, especially at night when it's still going on and you seeing this, saying it's brighter than it is during the daytime, and it's very distracting for the drivers on the roadway, which is why people put them out by the street, is that they want to draw the people in. So that was one of the reasons I think I liked the eight seconds part, is that that way it stays for a while, people can see it, but it's not continually drawing their eye away from the road.
Okay. Any other questions? Continue, please.
Changeable copy sign, we just made a little Changeable copy sign, we just made a little change here, that this is basically mechanical-type changing signs. I'm not sure if you remember back, that, like, the old clock things that would go, they'd flip down the little, so that'd be a mechanical type of sign, something like that. And then electronic reader board, we included language that added LEDs, similar electronical me, electronic means. And out of both those changeable copy and electronic reader board, we removed, but not including time and temperature display signs. That's an indicator how old this code is. Remember back in the day, like, the bank would have the time and temperature sign? So that just falls under whichever category. I mean, it's, it's just either a changeable copy or electronic reader board. And then we get into the political signs, and this is where we basically revamped the whole section, rearranged some things based on the state codes. Retitled it from non-commercial signs just to political signs. And then we said they're allowed in all zoning districts in accordance with the following. And then we go into more detail about the filing where they have to register with the city clerk. And then the duration, this has not changed. Oh, yes.
Mr., Mr. Diaz?
So the 71 days on, on Section B, that's, that's, that's managed, I mean, that's a uniform across the state, you're saying?
That's correct. That's the state code.
Okay.
So, and that was 60 days before, and then less than a year or so got updated to 71, for whatever reason. So it reflects the current state code. And then shall be removed 15 days after the general election, except if someone goes on, that they're, they can keep their sign up. It's additional conditions. It says it shall support or oppose the candidate for public office or support or oppose a ballot measure. And that sign shall contain the name and phone number of the candidate or campaign committee contact person. Again, that's part of the state code, so it's included here too. And then the size, residential, 16 square feet, non-residential, 32 square feet maximum. Sign-free area, this is an area, we're not saying, well, we're saying there's areas in town where there should not be political signs. They can always be on private property, even in this sign-free area. So I'll just, since we're talking about, I'll go down here to the sign-free area. So the sign-free area, political sign-free zone, again, this means not in the city's right-of-way. They can be on private property in these, this area that's in orange here, but they can't be in the city's right-of-way. And that's something that the city can establish, these zones per state code, to set aside areas in their right-of-way that they want free clutter of political signs. So it basically runs from Akoma Boulevard West, London Bridge Road, Lake Havasu Avenue, and then coming down to the south, and then branches off on Mesquite up to Akoma again, up near, towards City Hall, and then back down on Swanson, connecting again to Lake Havasu Avenue South, and then down to where Mulberry crosses over the highway, and then the entire island. So that is the sign. It's, that's the map of the sign area. It's much more legible than the previous one.
Point of clarif, point of clarification on that map. So assume one side of Swanson, you can't put signs in the right-of-way, but the other side of Swanson, you can?
It's in the city's right-of-way along both the north and south sides, so it, no, not along, along neither side of.
Okay, because the map is drawn to one side, and I get that. I was just, just clarifying.
It includes the full right-of-way width, I should say, for Swanson and.
No problem.
And Mesquite there. Thank you.
Ms. Ballard, did you have another question?
No, my only question was, I noticed, I noticed it was the same situation on Lake Havasu Boulevard. It's a, it's a, no, no zoning on one side, but it looks like open zoning on the other. But you said that includes both sides of the street?
Right. That includes the entire right-of-way width.
Both sides.
Which is both sides.
Mr. Diaz?
So we have signs that back in the last, you know, back in, in the last election cycle, and then going on right now, they're all over these areas. They're all over Mesquite, Swanson, London Bridge, I mean, I'm sorry, Lake Havasu Boulevard up to Akoma and even beyond it, but in this orange area, there's signs all over the place. The railings, you're saying, like, these rails that, that block off the washes, there's, right now, there's brand-new signs posted up all over the place, zip-tied all over the place. What is the city's enforcement if, if, you know, once signs are considered in the wrong place? Because they're, I mean, they're, they're there right now in these areas.
Certainly. Thank you for the question. We'll go up here and look at this. So the sign-free area, which was what we just discussed, that map, and then the location. So the sign shall not be erected on public property, utility post, railings, or similar devices, medians, or in a location that's hazardous to public safety, obstructs clear vision in the area, or interferes with the requirements of ADA. And then signs may be erected on lot or property with permission of a legal property owner. So before, it didn't have things like railings on there. So that was added to the code just for that instance. If it's in the city's right-of-way and on a railing in the sign-free area, or out of the sign-free area, it shouldn't be on railings. This is saying in the sign, outside the sign-free area where it's allowed, in the city right-of-way, it can't be on railings.
So a business owner that has, you know, business on the, on, in those areas that says, yeah, put a sign up, it's not allowed to put a sign up, or it is allowed to put a sign up?
They're allowed to put the sign up on their own property.
On their own property.
Not in the city's right-of-way.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lehrer?
Thanks. Mr. Morris, is there a, is there like a footnote in the code that clarifies where it's in the public right-of-way versus private property, just so people don't get confused?
I believe it's right up here near the beginning. Let's see. Duration. Sign-free area, location.
If not, that's a good clarification to make.
Mr. Lehrer, are you talking specifically about the sign-free area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because it does say in that section, in that section E, within the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
So I mean, it states in E, and then it goes on into F to also say erected on public property.
I speak F. Yep.
So signs should not be erected on public property, utility polls and other things. So in that location, they can't be in, in the private property. They can't be in the public property.
Yeah, that, I, I see it now. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I ask, what, what is?
Ms. Wilson?
The, sorry, the history behind why the, this particular area is outlined as a no-sign-free area versus the rest of the town?
Well, the, the state.
Clutter.
Yeah, the state code allows the city to designate certain areas that are, where they don't want to see a lot of signage in the right-of-way. It's called like a commercial and hotel zone or something. It's supposed to, the idea, as I understand it, is to reduce the clutter that could come along with political signs in the right-of-way. And the state recognized that sometimes these signs get all over the place in the right-of-way. And so they, per the state code, we have to allow them in the right-of-way unless we designate a certain area where they're not allowed. And the city council went through that process a number of years ago to establish this boundary as the area where we don't want to see them in the city's right-of-way.
Question?
Ms. Ballard?
Then to follow up on what Mr. Diaz and also Mr. Lehrer, I think, commented on, what is the city currently doing about all of the signs that are now in non-compliance?
Well, they're not in non-compliance until this goes into effect, correct?
This city code, this proposed, these proposed changes will go to the city council in about a month, and then they'll become effective about a month after that. So this city code, these changes won't be effective until the end of this election cycle. So these will start with the next election cycle.
So currently, there is no code prohibiting political signage in the public right-of-way?
There are, there are, there is a code that prohibits signs in the public right-of-way in the sign-free area. So if we receive reports about those, we go check them out, and we've had to poll a couple signs if they're not on private property. So many of them that may look like they're in the right-of-way, so many times they're on private property. It is, can be challenging sometimes to figure that out. But we do abide, we, we're report-driven, so if someone reports something, we go and check it out.
Mr. Tuneman?
That was the point. Thank you. That was the point I wanted to make, is that we're reactive right now as enforce, code enforcement. So if we get direction from council to be proactive, maybe towards political signs in the future, then, then we'll use this code as that tool. But right now, we're strictly reactive to answer your question.
Strictly complaint-driven at this point.
Complaint-driven, right.
Thank you, Mr. Tuneman.
And I'm sorry, if I may just step back to the previous example, we asked about where political signs may be. Political signs may be placed within the public right-of-way. It says here in the free, the sign-free zone, except in this commercial zoning district, except in the sign-free area. So the question is, does it say somewhere that they can be in the public right-of-way? Yes, it does. And then it says they can be in the public right-of-way, but they need to be, not be a hazard in the public right-of-way. So hopefully, I clarified that a little more.
One, one last question.
Mr. Diaz?
Chairman. So just to, just for clarification, so there's a, right across from, the street that Black Bear Diner's on, it goes across McCullough, what is, what street is that?
Capri?
Riviera?
Riviera.
There's a, there's a big, if you, if you, if you're standing in front of Black Bear Diner, you cross over McCullough, there's a big empty lot there, it's owned, but it's a personal, private property lot. It's a political oasis of signs all the time. Is that, if, if the, if the owner of that lot says you could put a sign on his lot, is that a, is that okay? Or is it because it's on next to McCullough, you can't put the sign there?
If it was on their private property, not located in the public right-of-way, yes, and they have their, the property owner's permission, they could put a sign there.
Right.
And the reason I'm asking, because I know when this came up to council, when, when the vice mayor and a couple, a couple other people brought this up, they were saying that there were signs all up and down McCullough, because I thought they were on private property, and they, this is why they were bringing this up to just have this conversation today and then eventually go to them. So thanks, I just wanted to get that clarification, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else? Please proceed.
All right, thank you. We went over the location, removal, again, the person or organization who erects the sign is responsible for compliance with the city and state regulations, ongoing maintenance and removal of the political signs and any sign supports. Excuse me. A violation, of course, so if placement, location of political sign constitutes an emergency, which is something that's really a traffic hazard or something like that, then the city may immediately relocate the sign. And then we have to notify the candidate or campaign committee within 24 hours after, of the relocation. For other, all other violations, we notify the candidate, we leave it in place, notify the candidate that they have 24 hours to remove it, or the city may remove the sign. If they don't remove it and we do remove it, then we contact them, let them know we have it, and we have to keep it for at least 10 business days to allow them to come retrieve their sign. And that's the, that's the last of the changes.
Ms. Ballard?
So under violation, if the city then is forced to remove the sign and store the sign, there's no, there's no fee or penalty to the person making the violation to cover that cost?
Yeah, that's my question.
We don't have anything established for that.
It takes city time to remove and city time to store. I think that there should be some kind of penalty that the viol, violator needs to contend with, or there is no teeth in this.
Can I add to that?
Ms. Wilson?
That I read later on, that it is proposed that we would stop taking whatever the fee is upfront when they file for the permit to have these signs out there, that we were going to do away with that fee. I mean, maybe it's a forfeiture of that fee and we keep that in place.
There's never been a fee. There's a fee mentioned in the current political sign code. It says shall pay whatever fee is adopted by council. Council has never adopted a fee for that, so it's not really a fee for it.
Ms. Zero?
Just a question. What would the process be for implementing a fee? Is that something the city council does, or how does that work to implement a fee for something like this?
Mr. Chair, by state law, we're not authorized to charge a fee. So it's very specific what we can and what we can't do with respect to these signs. We have, we've repeated what we're allowed to do under state law in what we're proposing to.
We charge them.
I can't suggest to you that we, that we charge a fee, and I can't suggest to the city.
We charge enough fees.
Unless we're authorized by statute, particularly when it comes to political signs. It's just the way that is.
Mr. Diaz?
So a lot of times, just getting the sign down is, is, is negative enough to the, for the candidate or the, or the, or the ballot measure, whatever. But on the, on the flip side, what if there, and it's happening right now in this town, what if there's people taking down opposition signs and putting up their sign? I've had like numerous reports, it's happening right now. They're taking down one person's sign who's running for governor, and they're putting up another person's sign. I've, I've been telling people, just get a license plate number and go to the police department. I don't know if that's the right, because there is a law, I believe, that this is against law.
The state code has language in there about removing other people's signs without the permission. It's in the state code. There's something referenced in there if I don't.
It is a crime.
It is a crime.
Correct. So if someone were to, to witness that event, they would call the police department and they would.
Okay, so I'm giving them the right.
It would be a citation.
That's what I've been telling them, just call the police. Okay.
Please continue.
And that is the last of the changes to the political sign section of it. There's, the rest is just kind of marked out, part of the relocating and whatnot, so. And then, of course, the, the sign at the very end, excuse me, the, the map at the very end, it has the political sign-free zone. And I may add, ADOT right-of-way is under control of ADOT, so they typically don't want anything in their right-of-way. I'm not sure how proactive they are with removing things, but we don't really have any jurisdiction on ADOT's right-of-way. So if there's a, if someone's complaining about signs in ADOT's right-of-way, I suggest they contact ADOT.
Typically, ADOT, when they, their employees drive the highway and they see a sign, they just take it down. So, all right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. If there's anybody that wants to make any modifications, additions, deletions, whatever suggestions to this, now is the time. Any commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
I'd just like to make a comment. I want to thank the, the staff for, and whoever else did the redlining. I'm sure Mrs. Geary was involved. Thank you for clarification, because there's a lot of questions, and this, this clears up a lot of stuff.
Well, and that's why I wanted to go through it individually.
Yeah, thank you.
And yes, thank you. City clerk's office and city attorney's office contributed the vast majority of this work. I appreciate it. We just get it presented as a planning department. And then, did we open the public hearing? I don't remember we.
I have not.
Oh, thank you.
So this is a public hearing, and I will now open the hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all, please come forward and state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. As far as your comment goes.
Your name for the record, please.
Bob Smith.
Thank you, Bob.
As far as your comment about ADOT taking signs down, there's been a sign on the corner of Palo Verde South and the highway. It's been there long before the primaries, and it's still there, and it's fallen half off. Second, I like her comment about fining people for store, taking them down a store. If you don't have a penalty, what's to stop you from putting another one up? They take them down, so what? Put another one up. Third, there was been signs all up and down Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu Avenue, all the time, and nobody did nothing. Now, I complained about them, that's, you know, right-of-way, we did that, one excuse another, but nobody took them down. Why don't you enforce the codes? There again, you don't know.
Well, we do, we've received, when staff receives reports, we go investigate it and check it out, and if it's violation, we'll abide by the city code.
And again, we are complaint-driven, so if there's a complaint, we'll address it. The city typically addresses it, and if it's found to be on private property, then it's left alone. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the item, and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of item number twenty-two dash thirty-four sixty-nine, amending Title fourteen, zoning development code, Section fourteen oh four oh eight, sign standards, and Sections fourteen oh six oh three, definitions, adding development standards for changeable copy and electronic reader board signs, establishing minimum freestanding sign base width, amending political sign standards, and amending sign definitions per the attached track changes sign code amendment document. As a reminder, this item will go to the city council's October twenty-fifth meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no more discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ID twenty-two dash three four six nine as per staff's recommendations.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Ms. Zero, to approve ID two-two dash three four six nine with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion, on the item itself? Hearing none, let's go ahead and call for the question.
Motion passes six, is here.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the call to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on any item whatsoever, you can speak to the commission, we may not respond, but please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you, my name's Emiliano Torres, and I'm a resident here of Lake Havasu. I'd like to begin by thanking Mr. Morris for making this group aware that there's folks up in the foothills that are aware, that are concerned about a, a development that's being currently developed. I hope you folks are aware of the major earthmoving that's going on up there. It, it's not an incidental development, it's huge. There was a community meeting some, a couple of months back, and residents within three hundred feet of the development were made aware, but this development's going to have an impact exceeding very much over three hundred feet. The item that, or the issue that concerns me the most is in my discussions with staff, members of various commissions, with residents, is that this development has, or this proposed development has already been approved. And it, it makes it sound like the whole thing is in on a fix. Pardon me for what, how I'm saying this. My belief, and I think a lot of us is, there was a development approved, and now we have another change to that development that's in the process. In my discussions with even city council, the comment was, it's already been approved, and somehow, we need to make it, make you folks and city council, that the, the issue that the folks in the foothills are concerned with, and other people in the area, is the new development, not the one that's been approved in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the call to the public? Please come forward, state your name for the record again, please.
My name's Bob Smith again. My question is garage sale signs. There's an ordinance about garage sale signs, but it's not enforced. You see boxes sitting on the streets with rocks in them, and a garage sale sign on it, and it's been there for weeks or months, it's deteriorated from rain. How come nobody enforces it? If you see a si, a box laying on, or sign laying on the street, that's littering. You know who put it there, it's got an address on it. Enforce a stupid thing, but you don't do nothing, code enforcement don't do nothing about it. They blow all over the streets, so what? You don't find them, so people put them up, leave them there, and they never take them down. It should be put up Thursday night and taken down Monday night, that's it. That should be the code, but you gotta enforce it. If you don't, what's the code good for?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anybody else that would like, like to address the call to the public? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the call to the public, and Mr. Morris, future meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The meeting for the nineteenth of this month has been canceled, the meeting room has not available. The next regular meeting will be November second, it sounds like almost end of the year. November second will be the next regular meeting, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners, we stand adjourned.